We have a forum. I'm going to open the meeting at 6:05. Public hearing for the Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, in the Brookfield Town Hall. I ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The purpose of this hearing is to consider a request from Stephen Lammerow to construct a garage at his property located at 14 Schoolhouse Cross Road in Brookfield. A special permit is required due to the lot area being less than 70,000 square feet. Property is located in a rural residential district. Do we have Mr. Lammerow present?
Yep.
If you want to come on up to the chair if the board has any questions for you. Technically, the applicant is missing a lot, but it's your home. All right, so the issue is that you have 32,640 square feet.
Yeah, it sounds about right.
I'm having a hard time reading the number on the plot plan. Is there a 25-foot setback there, or is that 23?
We do have 25 on the side.
So you meet that?
Yes.
Okay, so the only issue is the actual square footage on the property. Are there any questions for Mr. Lammerow or his contractor, Mr. Bond?
Well, I had gone down and met with the greenhouse people, and we went around on a golf cart to see where it was. And I don't see any problem.
And everybody has their packet, correct? So this is an issuance of a special permit. Requires the unanimous vote, seeing we have four members. It has to be a 4-0 vote. Are there any questions before I entertain a motion?
What's the size of the garage going to be?
It's 20 by 32. It was 20 by 32, right?
There's no drawings for that, correct, in this package?
I do have some rough, if you'd like to move the order.
I'm all set. You meet the set?
Yeah, I think something rough is fine, just the dimensions and where it's going to be placed.
Absolutely. You have a packet, correct? There's a plot plan in there with that. I didn't know if it was a 25 or a 23-foot setback.
Yeah.
The red structure is the...
I must have... I don't know if this was on here or I wrote this. No, somebody else did. Yeah, I can't... I guess it's 23 feet.
Well, they're saying 25. Well, that was a question I had. It looked like a 23.
Somebody wrote 23 in there.
Is it so it's...
So what... which is it?
23?
It's a setback.
I think it's definitely 25 from the corner.
Right.
You understand it's going to become an issue when Mr. Taylor requests an Asbel, right? If it's 23, it's...
There's no issue, honestly.
No, it'll be 25, just to be sure it doesn't have to be 23.
Then where does 23 come from?
Are you sure that's a 3, or is that a 5 that was drawn messy? It looks like a 3, but also it could be like a 5.
Well, that's the first question I had.
That's a 3.
It looks like a 5, it looks like a 3. You have a copy. My copy looks like it could be a 5, like you said it looks like it was drawn too fast.
Right.
Bang, bang. That's why I had the first question, because if you're admitting that it's 23 right by there, you're falling within the setback.
So we can just take that as a 25?
We can take it as a 25.
The onus will be on the building inspector.
I do have on the letter of intent, just after we had measured, that it's 60 feet from the road, 25 feet or more from right-hand property lines, 40 feet or more from left-hand property, and 50 feet or more from rear property lines. And that was all field measured.
What's the outside dimensions?
20 by 32.
Full outside dimensions, 20 by 32.
Yeah.
Did you make sure all these miles across them? Notify all the voters? Is anybody here this evening here in regards to... Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm not really sure with all the formality of our stuff. I was just curious. I did speak to him, asked him previously about his intentions. That's kind of my only long-term concern is if it's intended just for a garage and storage, or if he intends to use it for something else further down the line. I don't have a problem with the location.
Do you have an answer to that question?
Yeah, well, I mean, I was... I did want to make the upstairs into... Eventually, over time, depending on funds and everything, I wanted to make the upstairs like an office studio for myself. Storage for other things, and that's pretty much it. Downstairs is the garage for my business. That's pretty much the gist of that.
Squash is requiring you to have some way to move the musical equipment, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think it'll be zoned or permissible to have a living area above it, so...
Unless that is another special meeting.
Okay, you're in a zoning...
Technically, yeah. But he'd have to jump a lot of hurdles to have living above it. Are you... do you jack to the...
No.
Actually, a living space up there would be pretty difficult to complete. We're just kind of doing a shell and then storage up there.
Egress and fire and all that.
Electricity, will you be plumbing the bathroom?
No plumbing, no.
So the lower level would be a garage and upstairs is storage and office.
Yeah.
Maybe some flowers and plants.
So you've got a ground floor on dimensions there, so what's the height of this?
The elevation should be...
I mean, the height of the building.
It was 16 on the floors and then a hip roof to keep it low. I want to say the overall was 21.
Do you have a picture? So it says in the request, it says a... Detached garage.
Yes.
So it's going to be more than a garage?
Well, a garage with the storage above.
With the storage, it sounds like an office.
Well, I'm...
It would just be good to put down on the permit exactly what you're going to do.
At this time... Mr. Thelma, when they presented this to you and you denied it, did Jeff have any issues with the renderings that they submitted?
It's less confusion if you just tell us what you're going to do. So we can write it up that way.
All we're doing is... The only issue is the square footage of the lot, and that's what we have to issue the special permit for. We don't tell him what he can build, that the onus is on the building inspector or the zoning enforcement officer.
That's up to the building inspector.
Well, if it's a tall structure with multiple floors, it seems to me that we should note that in the application.
Well, you're knowing...
Because then that leads to what it's actually going to be used for.
Well, you're knowing this through the discussion.
That's why I brought it up, to discuss it.
I mean, yeah, I went through everything that I was planning to do with it. I mean, sometimes plans change. I guess it could just be storage and that's it. I mean, if I run out of space in my sheds, it's just a storage spot and that's it.
We're not saying you can't do it, it's just... So it's a two-story building?
Yes.
And...
I'm seeing development.
What... was there...
I was just concerned with the long-term plans. Just one other question, if it's the time to do it now. Just to clear my question, I thought that the bylaws were that you weren't supposed to build more than 50 feet of the bathrooms. Is that what this is?
It's 25 on sides and rear, and it's 50 feet in front.
From the road, okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Lammerow a special permit for said application. Do I have a motion?
I have a micro motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, unanimous? And it's reflected, it's unanimous? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn special... I mean, the special...
Move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Did you grab the... get a hold of her?
She didn't answer the phone. Everything has to be unanimous for special permits. We're all set?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the posting for this?
Well, it's good you bring it up, so the neighbor...
Do you have the mailing?
He's surprised to think they didn't do a joint.
Nick, this is a special permit, too, right?
Which one do you want?
Sue Brogan?
Yes, special permit.
6:15, I'll call the next special permit meeting to order. It's in regards to 39 Allen Road, Brookfield. Susan Brogan was forwarded to this board from the zoning enforcement officer. Was referred this case because construction of a deck in a floodplain requires a special permit, according to zoning bylaw. Section 6, non-conforming land use and structure. Part C, section 1. And pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, or changed, provided the Board of Appeals grants a special permit and makes a finding that such extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental to the general public or to a butter's than the existing non-conforming use. Ms. Brogan is with us. And I will open the floor to you, ma'am. Can you just explain the intent of the project?
We put addition on the house, which we got a permit for, and I forgot to draw in the deck. So there's the addition, and now it needs the deck. So seven foot wide length of the addition.
So the... There's no request of the size of the deck. What was the size of the deck?
It was seven feet wide.
Seven feet wide, 25 feet long.
And what's the setback going to be on the side?
On the side, I believe it's going to be less than eight feet.
Less than eight feet. So for those that are out there listening, this is on...
Got the addition?
On the lake, and lots down there, kind of postage size stamp anyways. Eight feet's kind of a lot of area for lake property, no?
Yes, yes.
But it doesn't meet zoning. And there was nothing there prior? This is new construction?
The deck is new.
The proposed deck?
I'm sorry?
It was never there? It was new construction?
I don't understand, Steve.
There was never an existing deck there?
No, no.
This is brand new?
Brand new.
Try to be a little bit careful.
Anybody on the board have questions?
She's just across the front of that.
And does it come back?
Just a little bit around the side like that. I mean, just so that it doesn't go...
We don't want him falling off.
No, we do not want him falling off.
So is this really in the floodplain?
Yes.
Well, no, our house isn't in the floodplain.
We are in the floodplain.
Okay, we're in the floodplain.
I don't think the deck is. It could be closed.
It's elevated.
It's like four and a half feet tall.
I think the floodplain is towards the back there, near where the boundary of the water is.
We used the maps, we assessed this, and according to the maps, we were in the floodplain.
You're using the map? Okay, do you have the FEMA map?
I don't know what they... We just used the assessment map.
Can I just say that I was on Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners for seven years?
I know you were. I was on just before you left.
No, 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 not this conservation commission, the state one.
Okay.
And floodplain, any construction in a floodplain, the main consideration is if it will affect the ability of the floodplain to absorb water.
Right, and you're elevated anyway.
And the deck wouldn't affect that.
How high above the ground is it, roughly?
Four and a half feet.
Yeah.
Up to my chest.
When I looked at the floodplain on the FEMA... The FEMA maps should be in your office, in the building inspector's office. He should have the FEMA... I'm pretty sure he has a FEMA map, and I think the...
I thought the assessors would have the official FEMA map, but I'm not.
I don't think they do. And I think the floodplain is back towards where the water is. It is on your property, but I don't think it goes up as far as the house. It's close.
Well, no, it's a four feet.
Four and a half feet.
No, I'm talking about the floodplain.
Oh, yeah, well...
So anyway, it looks good.
So the five-foot extension off the gable end of the addition, is there a door over there?
No.
It's not very much where it...
The purpose of extending that?
Just so we can have a nice view over there.
The views on neighbors' property?
Well, off the lake.
Because we literally have 12-foot high fence over there, we can't see anything on neighbors, no.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Thelma or Ms. Brogan?
We have a blueprint in there.
One sec, Dave, before we... Did the board have any questions for either? Do we have any butters?
I'm not in a butter, but just for the information of the gathering, is the deck on piling?
It's going to be on cement post, yes.
Cement post?
Yeah. Well, inch.
Well, the footing will be 12.
The footing is cement.
You'll extend with a pressure treat.
So there's no permanent foundation that would displace water in the event of a flood?
No, because it only... It's going to be like this much over the... A few inches over the surface of the ground, and then we'll have a post up there.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Any butters with questions? Dave, did you have a question?
Yeah, you have a blueprint? How close is it to my boundary?
Less than... It'll be less than eight feet.
It's not close. We have... We've had three before now.
Yes, we have.
This is the fourth one. I haven't opposed or had any complaints, but now you're getting a fourth one, and you... Is it down towards the... Down towards the lakehead?
No.
Towards the big tree?
It's a big what?
Down by the big oak tree?
Oh, it's not that far down.
No?
No, 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 no. It's going to be seven feet away from the new roof. Seven feet extended.
Beyond the new roof?
Yes, and the lot goes like this, it expands as you go out.
So how the lot goes?
Well, that's... So that shouldn't leave you concerned about it.
Any other concerns?
Well, just, I mean, how... I mean...
What about the vote on it? Do you oppose the project, or...
No, I'm just... But I'm just concerned how close it's getting, I mean...
Through the chair, this actual putting this on is further away than the main house is from the building that is right on the property line.
Actually, the garage, I think.
It's garage, so...
It is further away than any of those structures. From the galleries, question.
So as the deck protrudes towards the lake, I'm going to butter Jeff Edwards over the next floor. The further it goes out...
The further we go.
The further it's away from the rim of the lake. It's on a 22... Probably a 22-degree angle. So the further, ever for every foot, based on that building, I'm going to say it's increased six inches almost for every foot that it goes out from the...
The only change to any other special permit is that five, five-and-a-half-foot jog off the gable end. That's why I asked it. If there's really no objection, I don't object to it.
The part that goes around the corner?
Yeah.
Any other butters have any concerns, questions? Board have any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the special permit for said project. Make a motion. Do we have a second?
This is only three and a half.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it's three and a half out.
Are you in favor of approving? Votes unanimous? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second? That's 6:23, Tom. All in favor?
Thank you, Tom.
Aye?
Aye.
Adjourning, we good? Aye? Adjourn, motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Good, aye, yeah. Tim, thanks. All right, next hearing will be in seven minutes. Yes, sir.
Seven minutes?
Seven minutes. Six minutes. All right, we'll open the third public hearing, 6:33. Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 6:30 PM, Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, in the Brookfield Town Hall Bank Room. Purpose of this hearing is to consider a request from David Holm. David, if you could please join us. To sell cars at his property located at 40 Allen Road in Brookfield. Special permit is required due to the lot being located in a floodplain. I also add a rural residential area. Let you present your case, sir.
Well, I recently retired from the construction business, and I got into as a hobby selling a couple of classic cars here and there. And I want to continue the hobby and start it as an actual business to be legitimate and have a license to basically buy and sell a couple of classic cars at a time. And also, there's a little bit of a niche thing where you can, through the internet, you get in touch with people trying to sell their cars or helping them sell their cars, which don't have the ability to advertise them on the internet and market them. And you can charge them a certain percentage to help them sell their cars. Where the car isn't even on my property whatsoever, but I'm helping them sell it. And that's what I want to do. So I got to get a permit through town to do that so that I can, you know, have a license to do it. Through discussion with town councils, for the board, I was... I had issues with the floodplain because they do have documentation that they are not in a floodplain and had been removed. It is still a rural residential area. Our bylaws are very specific, and it's voted by the town. They're not silent on the issue. There is a section at the bottom where we can make a decision if an issue is silent. But this is under auto sales, rental, services, and it's specifically not allowed in rural residential or floodplain. So to me, that's where the issue lies. Open the board to discuss. Like, I'm not going to be repairing cars on my property whatsoever.
I'm sympathetic. I believe you should be able to do pretty much anything on your property. You pay for it.
A lot of money in taxes, actually, because I live on a lake.
But the town got together, and they were very specific on auto sales in a rural residential area. And that's kind of what we're fighting right now. Do we have any butters that want to comment, or... We have people on Allen Road.
You just want to speak to Allen Brogan.
Can you just say your name for the record, please?
Hunter Farr.
Got that? Yes, sir.
I live at 42 Allen Road, right next to the river. I don't really have a problem with the idea of doing it, but I want restrictions on it. Restrictions I'd like on it are business between eight and nine and... Nine and four. And no more than two cars. And absolutely no service paid whatsoever.
No. Board have any questions for the gentleman? Comment? Mr. Thelma, your comment on the bylaw?
Like I told, the whole... They're very different of us, and I just... It's...
You're in a difficult situation, David, with that?
I don't want to the bylaw, it's appropriate issue, and that's why he's the only to be avoided.
And you wasn't a butter, what's your feeling?
I had no problem with it. But the ZDO also. I can't intentionally violate the law.
Discussion, your feelings?
There is a business up the street that ladies got that small sign that called in place. So I really don't see a problem, you know, two cars sitting on somebody's front lawn, you know, trying to sell. Who knows how long they're going to be there? Could be a few days, could be... You know?
And the whole idea is if this business does well, I, you know, it might grow, who knows? And then I might be interested in going and purchasing something on Route 9 here in town or renting something here on Route 9 in town and creating maybe some more revenue in taxes for the town. But at this point, you know, I can't afford to do something like that. I just want to start doing it the right way and get a permit to do it so that I can be legitimate and, you know, get a deal as license.
The only thing you have to do in the next phase would be to change the address to come back to us if he...
Well, part of this process is him getting a license to do it. That's a huge hurdle. We have an a butter that only has concerns with the operation so it doesn't aggravate his lifestyle, which is totally understandable. What's your setback currently now from the road? All we have is the assessor's map of the actual property. Yeah, that's all I have, is the assessor. Just a guesstimate, private road. Is that an aerial view? Yeah, I have an aerial view right here, but it's kind of tough to see. But I'd say it's more than 50 feet, or it's at least 50 feet. This is a lake? Correct, and this is my driveway up here, so the road is right up in here. And this is your driveway? That's my driveway. And this is a trailer that's now over here, this is my... Is this grass or... Yeah, this is all grass up in a higher area. And whose foot is that? That's my shed. Pretty closed off. Did you want to see this?
Uh, yeah.
So my concern, I think, just to make me be able to sleep at night, not to usurp the will of the town when they voted on this bylaw, where they specifically said no. Tim, we didn't even get... Do you have an issue with... Yeah. So I'll continue. The only way I'm going to be able to sleep tonight is if there's conditions, especially addressed by an a butter. Which I don't have any problems with. I'd almost make the addition that there are to be no vehicles on the road, that they all have to be stored in your driveway, not visible to... Well, I mean, you're creating more conditions than my neighbors that are living next to me. But you understand the 3,000 people in Brookfield put conditions on you before you even sat down. I mean, this is not a dealership where people are going to be driving in because I advertise. This is no advertising to come look at my car. It's just an internet thing.
Can I...
If he's done, you can.
Yeah.
If he's a good husband, he's done, yeah?
I'm done, for sure. He's done, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
So if we... So the way that our driveway is positioned, if we had to have the two additional... If it is two cars and we have to keep them in our driveway, that would be fine, but it certainly could just create a little bit of...
logistic problems parking our own vehicles going in and out of the house.
And getting in and out of the garage. So, I mean, we could do it, but it would... It certainly could create... And if that is the condition in order for this to happen, then we'll comply. But it would... We certainly would prefer if we didn't have to because of getting in and out of the driveway. It's getting out of the garage is going to be... Could be an issue.
Didn't have to watch, I missed something, sorry. Go ahead.
Well, they have enough room to put...
How far is that trail?
We have enough room to have them, but to get in and out of the garage and have them there is going to be...
Did you meet the setback for the 50 feet for the front, you know? From the road to the current house? I didn't build the house.
We definitely have a...
I believe so.
We have a very large, open space at the top of the... By the street. The driveway goes down, and the house is set a little bit further down. So the driveway's on the side, and we actually go down the driveway and then into our garage. So, you know, if that's what we have to do, then we'll do it because this is a hurdle in order for him to move this forward, but...
So what?
If you make them do that, then you're impinging on their safety because they have to park two cars in their driveway as it is now. If somebody had to get an ambulance with them, where they have plenty of room at the top. It seems like an arbitrary condition.
You wasn't a butter, have no problem with cars on the road?
I have no problem with David and Lisa keeping two cars up in front, not at all. They are meticulous, law-abiding.
Yes, sir.
I'm Steve J. I'm also a butter. I also agree with Susan, and I think that having them have cars down there along with their own two cars, one with fairly much truck, not to mention they also be my... own two cars, one with fairly much truck, not to mention they also be on place, folks can be there at certain times. And to me, it would be more of a hazard to want to have a situation in that area.
We, Steve and I are elderly, we visit there a lot, and if we need an ambulance, who wants to get me to get that bus?
Jeff, are you elderly as well? Are you elderly as well?
Absolutely.
I am.
They're making.
I am considered a senior citizen as well.
It's no different, Jeff Edwards again, it's no different that if you drive up and down Allen Road today, you're gonna find two or three boats out there for sale, small vehicle trailers right on the road. It's no, they're not gonna change the appearance of the road whatsoever.
And especially, the cars that he buys are classic, I mean, they're beautiful cars. I mean, they're loved for, you know, and people, and, you know, and that's just it, it's not like they can have teenagers looking for those particular cars. These are cars that are well sought after and probably all the collectors would be looking for these.
Their property is beautifully maintained.
That is, that's no doubt about it.
They're maintained beautifully, or two.
Are there any other butters that want to?
Just run a small business and see what goes.
Enter Jack, no? So, Pat, what was the?
There's a hand over here.
What was the gentleman's? Well, Sean?
Could you please describe the nature of the business again? Will there be any servicing of motors or?
No.
None at all?
None.
So it's like a pass-through business wheel?
If anything, it will be a buff and shine and they'll be on for sale. That's it.
Buff and shine?
He does a lot of it.
Oh, no doubt. Classic car aficionado. I was just wondering about if you're putting, if you're in a floodplain and you're doing buff and shine.
I'm not in a floodplain.
I'm not in a floodplain.
And there will be no oil, anything.
His house is like twenty-five feet up from the lake.
Okay.
No oil distribution of any kind. It's not allowed.
What was the conditions requested by the gentleman?
It's okay.
Who cares?
Oh, okay, okay.
Which was what his request is?
Yeah.
So no more than two vehicles?
And starting at like nine or eight or nine?
Nine to four is fine.
Nine to four.
Nine is, nine to four is fine.
And no service pay?
No service pay.
Nine to four, Monday through Friday, or?
That's fine.
He didn't specify, he's gone.
No, he's not.
I didn't know this stuff yet, but I didn't know he hasn't managed to get a few people to stop in on Saturday or Sunday.
I would think they're more prone to stop. Do you oppose a Saturday, a seven day a week, nine to four?
No.
I don't oppose it.
So we should cross over floodplain here, right?
That's not an issue. And then, no service?
No.
Jeff, sir.
No service to any vehicles on property.
Steve, that was a business, no one is to add any.
Tim, comments?
Yeah, I don't feel I can start a tenure here going against what the bylaw says. It just doesn't feel right. So, but I do have a question that, I don't know if this will help or not. Do, why can't you buy, why can't you buy a car, own it, and then sell it privately? Why does this have to be called a business? If you're going to be doing very small amounts of this type of thing, why does this have to be called a business at your house?
Well, you want to answer that?
You wipe my head and answer it.
Looks like you are ready to go. Let's hear it. You want to answer? Go ahead.
So, so a couple, there's a couple reasons why it has to be a business. Number one, because in order for him to eventually, hopefully, have this be more than a hobby, this is the first step in him being able to, once he gets the business established, to get a dealer's license. So then, he can actually be more efficient, go to an auction and possibly buy one or two cars at auction. If he doesn't get, if he does, if this isn't approved, then he can't go to get a dealer's license, so then he can actually go and go to the auction. Secondly, we need it to be a business, because he still has many years that he needs to work and hopefully put money away in a retirement account. So, there's other, there's other reasons why this needs to be an actual business.
Well, the huge thing is those auctions and you can't attend them without a license.
Right.
That's true.
And so, the whole barrier is being able to get a dealer's license. And if, because he can't drive six hours someplace to find a car. It's not, it's not, it doesn't make sense for him to drive to.
It's not cost productive.
It's not. So, by having the ability to go to an auction, that is what will help make a difference.
Plus the plate, right?
And they do, and having a dealer's plate as well, so.
So, Tim, I was, I was against this before I even came to the meeting, based on the bylaw, for the same reasons you have. We have, we have pretty much every butter here that changed my mind, especially with the three conditions that this gentleman would like to put. I'm, I'm gonna vote for it with the conditions. He cannot get a license tonight unless it's a unanimous vote.
I know that. That's why I was trying to explore this other way to see what we could satisfy or not satisfy. So you feel like you would be at a real disadvantage in starting what you're starting here if you don't have the license?
That's why I'm doing it now. I'm wanting to be legitimate about it, too.
And I feel bad about using the word against it also, because I, you know, it's like, I don't want to be against the bylaws as they're written.
And that's why we're here tonight. For him to buy and sell a car, he has to pay the tax on when he sells it.
Need to what?
He'd have to pay the tax on when he sells it. If he bought and sold a car and put it in the yard, he has to pay the tax on it.
Well, we won't talk about that.
I think that's why he wants the license, you don't have to do that.
No, I think he wants the license so that he can.
Well, there's a bunch of things. It's, as a business, of course, businesses, you own them, there's write-offs. So if I go to an auction, there's a write-off going to, say, a Barrett-Jackson auction, looking for a classic car. My entrance fee, my travel, my hotel stay, it's all business related, right?
This is really an uncomfortable position with the butters here.
And that's what sold me.
You know, you know, supporting him in a way. And, and this part here saying, no, there's a reason why we have bylaws, so.
That's why we're here.
And that's why he.
That's why the zoning board is here.
There's not one here that object to it.
I wonder if we can't continue this hearing till the next time we meet and search for some other solutions. I just wonder if there's another, some kind of other possibility that this could work out where we don't have to violate the bylaws. And I just wonder if giving it a little time, we might be able to find something. It's like, I can't think of anything else right now.
But you understand the past two and everyone else that we've done, we violate bylaws because it's a special permit. That's what we do. We're either for it or we're against it.
That's what, I was on the zoning board of appeals, so that's why we're here.
That's why we exist. It's for special circumstances.
And I'm sure when this, this bylaw was in place, it's, you know, somebody that wanted to create a repair shop and sell twenty cars in the front of their yard type of thing, that's not what I want. This is a classic car only type of thing, couple cars in my yard at any given time and that's all. That's all.
But what I'm reading here is an N, stands for no.
That's what I saw.
It's not a SP.
That's what I saw.
Standing for a special permit. So I wonder if we still can't, if we can't come to some, something else, and I don't see us getting anywhere else, that we can't continue this and maybe allow me to explore this with the selectmen or other people in town, because I, I just don't feel like we should go against the bylaws this easy. You know, I'm not saying.
But understand the selectmen have no purview over this.
I.
The people in this room, your butters have more say than the three select.
And they're all here.
Well, that's a good reason, but also, this is an official document for the town and I just don't want to go against it this easily. And I, and I won't say that I won't, but I, I just wonder if we can't continue this for one more meeting.
Okay. Did you want to?
Mr. Chairman, if I just briefly, I don't want to interject myself, you guys are having a conversation and I think you've correctly identified the issue. But you, they speak of a license here. What you're issuing would be, I guess if you were going to issue with a special permit, there are additional licensing requirements, in my opinion, for a used car dealer, and that would be a class two license. And that would be what the selectmen's issue.
Mm-hmm.
And they typically will look at a suitable person, suitable place, and there's a bond requirement as well.
I already have my bond.
And the zoning issue may be an issue at that hearing as well.
We only have a certain amount of days from the application. If we continue, we have to fall in.
I think you have a little bit way to schedule something else. You have, you're not limited to a certain amount of time. You can reschedule this.
So?
The permit is to the home, is to David's home, correct? Not to?
To the property.
Not to the property?
Yes, the home's through the property, he has to file it.
But if the homes were to sell the property, the exemption, the special permit would apply it, correct?
You have to file it with the registry of deed.
You, you could make it specific to that, to this particular applicant, a special permit.
It's, it's on his deed, he has to file it with his.
But it would be with this, with this particular applicant, and it could expire on sale.
It could expire upon what?
A sale.
None of us have any problem with that, you know, that they'll, what they say, have a little scruple. But they wouldn't sell their house or become a used car.
No.
So before we, before we entertain a motion, Tim, which you might vote against, as I, I retract that, withdraw. I guess, Dave, do you want to have a discussion with Mr. Simons, or do you want us to vote tonight?
I don't know. Simons is.
That's me. Yeah. It's, this isn't where I think I need the discussion. Not, not that I would rule it out, but I, I think it would be more the officials in the town.
I mean, if you have an okay from the ZBA, hopefully the, I guess the selectmen could still.
Technically they can.
Technically say no in the first place, so why even, if you could help me out tonight and give me an okay, the rest of the committee. But, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, the way that you framed it is that you wanted to work with different entities to him, for him to place it somewhere else.
No. What I asked is just to continue this hearing so I could investigate this a little bit more with the officials in town, so I don't go against the bylaws that easily.
I think town council just laid it all out. We both have a good grasp on it. We both have the same issue, but I've got all of the issue.
I, I need a little bit more time. And I need a little bit more conversation and discussion about this, and I think the selectmen would be able to help me.
We're the deciding, we're the deciding board right now. Nobody else in town can decide this.
Excuse me, is it, I mean, you had said.
I didn't say that somebody else was gonna decide.
More, really more say this than the selectmen?
In my concern, they do, regardless of this issue, but, but town council is correct, the selectmen do issue permits for used car sales. And when I sat there for six years, you sat there for three, the only issues we ever had were the ability to sell licenses and insurance. If you have a license, if you have property to sell a car, Brookfield welcomes a business owner.
So I'm trying.
What class license is this?
I'm in the same boat. It's, it's tonight, we have everything in front of us, we have a butters that took their time, and that object, we have conditions on this, we have four now.
We have legal counsel on that.
Legal counsel's opinion, Ken? Do you want to vote tonight, or do you want to continue? Knowing that it's gonna take a four, zero vote.
It's, it's not gonna work then, we're just.
You don't know, you don't know how he's gonna vote. But he's asking to continue. Both of us don't feel there's a need to.
Okay, let's use a few more minutes here and see what we can do. What class license are you looking for? Educate me a little bit.
I'm not really sure what the class is.
It's a class two license, dealer's license. So the first step is to get whatever this is called.
Special permit.
Special permit.
Then, the second step is to file an application with whoever in town, I don't know, the board of selectmen, in order for him to, to apply for a class two license. But we can't apply for a class two dealer's license for him to sell used cars until we get the special permit that we can have the business at our.
Or, or a different address that allows.
And so, and if you say, if the town says no for the Allen Road.
At my residence.
Then our next step, which we, he's not working, and so we can't necessarily afford, but our next step, if you say no to this, for him to have this business, is for us to go research commercial property somewhere and pay, which we already have been researching, at a minimum a thousand dollars a month. So, that is our next step. If you don't approve this, then our next step is to go to Sturbridge, Brookfield, wherever we can go, find a commercial piece of property to rent, and then apply for a dealer's license in that town.
So, excuse me, so just to clarify, so if this passed here, it still has to vote to the board of selectmen to get it?
Yes.
So maybe that's who they get decided?
Right.
Well, that was part of the discussion, well, they need this for that license.
Right. The next, the gentleman mentioned that he wanted to discuss it with the board of selectmen, who are maybe sitting here, but if we're doing this, it has to vote to the board, not you.
A better word. Yeah?
Well, this is just a point of order, since the applicant is asking that a bylaw be completely put aside to enable his business, shouldn't this be a hearing for a variance rather than a special permit?
I think that would come into play with the selectmen issuing a license for.
No, this is nothing to do with the selectmen. It was a ZDA, can you issue the variances or special permits?
Sharon, it requires a special permit. It requires a special permit.
I was curious, because it does say that it is not allowed in a floodplain and not allowed in a rural residential. So my assumption was it would require it to be put aside entirely and that would require a variance.
It's not in a floodplain.
It's not in a floodplain, that's all.
It's twenty feet high above.
Okay, I take it right.
No, he, he got a loan off of that.
I'd almost agree with her that it might be a variance issue. It's a variance issue.
Well, if this bylaw allows use variances, and I wasn't here to opine today about this, tonight about this, if your bylaw allows a use variance, that's where the, the league should be granted here. The bylaw does not allow this in this district.
So if we granted a special permit, does it move, would we have to grant the variance?
I, I think it would probably be more appropriately, if there's a use variance to be granted. And again, I didn't look at the bylaw, Nick might be able to tell me that. Do you allow for use variances in your bylaw?
Uh, yes.
That it's likely it would be a variance for, for use. It's not allowed, so therefore, just like a dimensional variance, it's, it's not allowed within a setback. You want to do it, you have to come in. So it would probably be more properly a use variance.
Are we able to hear and vote on that tonight with the intent of the postman?
I, in my opinion, I, I say no. I think that if you're gonna do something like this, it probably ought to be properly posted, so that people can come out and, and give their, their input.
Your, your opinion, Nick?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Blake on this.
So I think we get our extension and you have to reapply for a variance. Are you okay with that?
Then I have to send all the butters the same thing and go through another hundred dollars and apply another ninety dollars and all that stuff? Because I wasn't informed of what I really needed to do through the town in the first place.
Yeah, I, I agree. But Sharon brought up a good point.
I mean, I told them myself that it would be a special permit, because it would be a use, but.
Well, I have to do what I have to do.
Jeff?
And as a butter, I'm gonna have to take time out of my schedule to come back again because we can't make a decision on something.
Well, it's, it's not an issue of decision now, it's an issue of variance versus special permit.
You know, maybe you're trying to do the right thing, get a license and pay taxes accordingly.
I, I agree.
And waste our time again.
And money.
And the people's time and the town's time.
So, Jeff, the intent is not here to issue a variance versus a special permit. Are you worried about somebody appealing it?
I am, of course, that's exactly what I am, I'm worried about.
So if we took the vote to order a variance this evening, the onus would be on Mr. Holmes, and he can make that decision if he wants to appeal. Well, to be a defendant in that appeal.
I suppose you could go forward based on that, if you want to.
So that's where it's at. If you have... Everybody in the Butters has 20 days to appeal this once the ballot. Within that 20 days, if someone appeals it, you'll have to go and fight that appeal.
Right.
And it could be on the simple fact that it's a variance versus a special permit which was posted.
So wait the 20 days.
The call is yours if you want us to vote on this.
Oh, sure, if we can just take the vote and see how we make out, and if not, I can go for...
Are you close to that, Tim?
What would be the vote for?
The motion that I would look for would to grant Mr. Holmes a variance to... Where are we, 40? Is it 40?
Forty, I don't know.
Forty Allen Road, with the conditions of not having more than two vehicles, operation hours between 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Sunday, no service to any vehicles on property, and expiring on transfer of property. Those four conditions. And it would be a variance vote as opposed to a special permit vote.
So I got a couple of questions from Mr. Blake. One is, how do you feel about us turning this into a variance right on the spot?
I've already answered that question.
Yeah, I didn't quite get... I didn't quite get the...
I think it would be...
I'm sort of chewing on it, you know?
I think it would be better to restart the process with a variance allocation and variance request. I understand that there are people in the audience that spent their time, but... To do it right, provided that there are use variances granted, and your zoning fourth officer tells me that there are, it would be, at least, people out there would know a use variance versus a special permit.
So, Tim?
Okay, I got it. So I got one more question for you. That is, when he goes for, say, if it is, if we are correct, it's a second class...
Class II.
Class II, sorry, dealer's license. He goes before the Selectmen, as best you know, and it's up to them to grant or not grant it at that point?
The Board of Selectmen will look under this statute. I'm forgetting the section of the various... They'll look to whether or not this is a suitable person.
Right.
Whether or not this is a suitable place. And there's a bond requirement that will have to be met.
So they could look at the suitable place part as violating or not violating the bylaws about whether he could have that business in that location?
Well, presumably, at this point, you would have granted a use variance.
We would have said it.
So you will make it so that, in your opinion, that particular... That particular business can be conducted there. Now, again, that's not the end of their analysis. When they're looking at a suitable place, they might also look for the neighborhood that it's in. They might look to see whether or not there's typically a plan that is submitted with the Class II license. So they'll see how many cars will be parked, when they'll be parked. All those kind of things that are kind of aside from a zoning Board of Appeals analysis. But it would certainly come into some... It would come into their purview if this was not allowed in that district.
Right. So in a way, we'd be kicking... That part of it would be kicked up to the Selectmen.
But it would be, he couldn't apply until after the appeal process of 20 days. And I, as chair, will entertain a vote on a motion, because I believe the intent is there. It is there. That is the intent. I mean, it's variance versus permit. It's all been...
Yeah, no, I think that's fabulous that you flagged that. Absolutely.
So...
Nothing's changed except that one word.
If we don't require him to redo this as a variance, what's the danger in this for us? And what's the danger in for him?
It's for him, and that's where I gave him the ability to back out now and apply credit. If somebody appeals it, he'll have to fight that appeal. And that onus is on him.
The question is, are we allowing enough of the public to really understand what we're doing? Or is this kind of a closed...
Well, it's already been advertised as a permit instead of a variance. And if anybody had any issues with the whole thing in general, they would be here tonight.
Peter?
In my opinion.
I think if you're doing this, you're setting a very bad precedent. You're basically trying to finesse an issue.
Peter, were you here for the whole time?
But it doesn't matter.
Just asking you.
No.
No, I'm here for the question about... I've been here the whole time for the variance versus the special permit. You're basically changing the ground rules. You're basically opening yourselves up to an appeal from the planning board, as well as from the Selectmen, because you're not going according to the steps that are laid out in the zoning bylaw. So, you know, it looks like a pretty simple little thing here, but you're basically setting a bad precedent for the next time as well. So, you know, granted, it is an inconvenience, but it protects you. I have not heard anybody speaking against this. It protects you from any appeal. It keeps it clean. I don't know whether the ZBA can simply waive the fee, since you've already paid it for this process.
It's not the fee. It's all the Butters and the certifiers, and he's knowledgeable that. We gave him that choice. He's chosen to move forward. My belief, and they can weigh in on theirs, the intent is here.
It is here. It's all here.
It's specifically for the purpose. It's just verbiage of special permit versus variance.
All right. I would just simply say you are setting...
For this matter, it's not that much. It's not that important.
So do you want us to take a vote on the variance?
If possible, let's just take a vote and see what happens. And if not, I can reapply for a variance instead of a permit.
Any further discussion on this matter? I'm going to entertain a motion to grant Mr. Holmes a use variance for forty Allen Road with the four conditions of not having more than two vehicles on said property between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., no service of any kind to any vehicles on property, and expiring upon transfer of deed.
Some moves.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about that. I think on that one, it's not just if he sells the property, but if he rents it, for instance, or it does not... It's not his principal residence anymore. Maybe because he could rent it out, move somewhere else, rent it out, and still run the business out of there.
So how would you like to word it?
Well, I guess maybe not his principal residence. A sale or not his principal residence. Put it both ways.
Do we have a friendly amendment to...
Yes.
So you understand that, Pat? Sale or... Pat, do you want to word it? Sale or loss of permanent residence?
Or become not his primary residence.
Do we have a second to the amendment?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
It's just...
I know.
It's just so if you rent it, it doesn't become...
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? I want to take a roll call on this. Come to our eye.
Now to I.
Cleveland I? Can you say Cleveland I?
Oh, Cleveland I.
This is the motion for the variance?
This is the vote on the motion.
On allowing him to have this as a variance.
As a variance with the four conditions.
Yeah, I will go along with it.
Sign it, Dan?
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that it was a unanimous vote. To your favor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Still, we have a second. It's 7:13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right, we are definitely behind schedule. I'm going to open up the fourth. But it's not needed to have it in here. Okay, so I'm going to open the next hearing at 7:13. Yes, sir.
I do believe that his wife's cousin is here in the audience.
Wife's cousin in the crowd?
Here is your manager.
Hi, sir.
If you... I'm here for a lot of...
Oh, so you're not related to this individual?
Yeah, she is my cousin.
Okay, but you didn't want to speak on behalf?
No.
Okay. Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 6:45 Tuesday, October 10, 2017, in the Brookfield Town Hall banquet room. The purpose of this hearing is to consider requests from Richard Thorkelson to construct a shed in his property located at 44 Pine Lane in Brookfield. A variance is required due to the lot area being located in a floodplain in a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Property is located in the floodplain district. We have the paperwork in front of us. Lot area is 7,500 square feet. Enlarge existing storage work shed from 6 by 10 to 8 by 15. We have the rendering. Existing... All right, so he's basically... So can we have that plot plan in front of us?
Yeah.
I think...
He's basically trying to enlarge the existing shed with the dotted lines, which does encroach the side. But in my belief, it doesn't encroach it any more than the existing garage.
No. This is the only good plot plan we've seen so far.
But it doesn't have the setback, so... But I don't think setback...
It doesn't have... Well, it's got a 34...
You think that's what it means? And then 30. Okay, so it does have setbacks.
It looks like inches. It's 34 inches.
Wow, good eye.
34 inches is the garage corner, apparently, and the new shed will cut that down to 30 inches. And that'll match the shed that's the neighbor's shed, who's also 30 inches from his line, so they'll be matching.
And his existing house actually approaches even closer. So the primary issue is the non-conforming and the floodplain. And again, this is a shed. It's not a residence.
Well, I do know the 100-year floodplain, because I got some involved with the addition around that house, being the construction commission. The 100-year floodplain is about two inches below ground level right here at the corner of the porch.
At where the garage is?
No, where the porch is.
On porch is on the house?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It was two inches, about two inches below the ground level.
Below the ground, yeah.
So the shed is really tiny. Is it in the floodplain?
It's not in the floodplain, no.
Because the 100-year floodplain is, you know, like I said, two inches below the corner of the porch there.
Another issue that wasn't brought up was that there was actually construction beginning on this without a permit. It was a cease and desist order issued by the zoning enforcement officer. Nick, has he been paying the fines, or did he pay any fine?
No, we made an agreement that he would attempt to get variance as possible.
Do we have any discussion here before we open it up to a Butters?
No.
Any Butters wish to address the board? Sir, did you have a...
No, there's an only question, and if you just answer, this is for the shed or the addition. But I'm already talking about it. It's an additional one.
No, it's not an additional one.
Two and eight, 8 by 5, 8 foot 5 inch by 15 foot 9 inch.
Did all the Butters return the cards?
We wouldn't.
Well, the Butters are her sister and her cousin.
There are no other Butters?
Oh, this is the one in the middle.
Yeah.
Oh, he's a floodplain.
So the issues are the floodplain and the non-conforming law. Do we have any other discussion? Purpose that we're here for is to issue the variance, so I'm going to entertain a motion to issue a variance to Mr. Thorkelson. Yes?
Some move.
Wait a minute. To issue a variance for the 8 foot 5 inch by 15 foot 9 inch addition to the existing shed. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Entertained a motion to adjourn at 7:18?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Next. Public hearing. Print this any smaller. It's scheduled for 7 o'clock. I'm going to open the meeting at 7:19. Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 10, 2017, in the Brookfield Town Hall banquet room. The purpose of this hearing is to consider an administrative appeal from John D. Holcraft at his property located at 26 Allen Road in Brookfield regarding the cease and desist order from the zoning enforcement officer. Mr. Holcraft, did you want to join us?
Yes, sir.
So the zoning enforcement officer hereby orders cease and desist for your use of the property located at 26 Allen Road, Brookfield, Mass, for purposes of storage of junk and other debris of a junk slash scrapyard. He has observed that you've stored junk and other debris at the property. The subject property is located within the town's floodplain zoning district. Pursuant to the zoning bylaws, Section 4B, 1C, you cannot have more than one principal use of the property pursuant to the zoning bylaw Use Regulation Table, Commercial Use, such as junk or scrapyard are not allowed by the right of the floodplain district. Therefore, you and all persons acting on your behalf or in concert with you are hereby ordered to immediately cease and desist each of the activities described above and as they violate the Brookfield zoning bylaws. This means that all use of the property for a junk or scrapyard must cease, and all of the materials, vehicles, and equipment associated with such use must be removed from the property forthwith. Please be advised, if you are aggrieved by this order, may be appealed in accordance with Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 815, Section 12, Town Hall zoning bylaw. However, any such appeal would not excuse you, and your immediate compliance with the order as set forth herein. Yes, sir.
You have the cards returned from his... Return them in here.
So the appeal, nature of the appeal for Mr. Holcraft, no junk was present. Looks good from street and neighbors. Nature of relief request. No junk was present when issued notice from ZBO. No fines should be imposed on me. That's just a copy. So, Mr. Thelmo first, did you have any... Did you have anything to say in regards to the cease and desist and any action after?
The... I'd just like to go over a couple of definitions first. Under principal use, it's the primary use of a lot of building. Under accessory use, a use that is incidental to and secondary to a principal use located on the same lot or adjacent lot. Mr. Holcraft is in the floodplain district. The purpose of the floodplain district is to protect the public health, safety, general welfare, protect human life, protect me from the hazards periodic flooding. Under Section 4B, prohibited use, all districts, the development of a single lot. Stand corrected, prohibited use. C, more than one principal use on a lot may only be allowed by special permit issued by the zoning appeals. Mr. Holcraft is running a business at that property. He has, he had a lawn here, this is that is dwindling down, but he still do have a lease. He has a junk removal business that is still ongoing. And it is expressly prohibited under the zoning bylaw of Brookfield.
So the cease and desist was for the property itself, not the junk?
Having a secondary use.
The junk just shows the secondary use.
It's a secondary use because of this business as a junk removal.
So his response, if there was no junk present, really is irrelevant?
He still has equipment. He still has equipment, he still has trucks, and he still has debris on the property.
Which justifies in your mind a business?
Uh, it justifies in any reasonable mind.
Which violates the zoning bylaws of secondary use.
Expressly prohibits.
Board? Comments? Questions?
Uh, I've been looking to ask right now, you know, maybe further into the description.
Well, it's, the secondary use is, uh, is very, you can see it there. It's not like, uh, because he puts pieces of plywood up to hide it, but that's beside the point.
Well, it's, again, it's a junk issue versus secondary use business issue.
Right, a scrap.
Well, with the business itself.
Right.
There could be no junk there, you could have a bobcat.
Well, that's, you know, the contractor's, yeah, so it's a second business. But I know that both trucks are filled with scrap.
Tim? No. Dave, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, first of all, I'm not in the flood zone. Number 28 is in the flood zone, I'm not in the flood zone.
One sec, Dave.
If I may, if you're going to go forward with this?
We can't because he's leaving. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna recess until he returns. Thank you, sir. All right, we will reconvene at 7:29. The floor is yours again, Mr. Holcraft. Please, everyone?
All right, like I was saying before, I'm not in the flood zone. The house next door is in the flood zone, Paschal is in the flood zone, I own that also. 26 Allen Road is not in the flood zone, so I want to make that straight. Number two, I'm appealing both things. Junk on my property and running a business from my property. I'm not running a business from my property. I have my trucks there, I bring my truck home at night, and I have a bobcat there. As far as the junk? The junk, most of the junk was removed two, three years ago, and I've gotten a pretty good handle on it. I like my business, I bring my stuff home with me. But I got rid of most of it, all of it. What I have now is some riding lawnmowers. The ZEO here has failed to show me pictures of junk. He said the biggest thing was, when he first come up there, I asked him, "Why did you send me a letter?" He says, "Well, I haven't even been up on the property."
Well, I'm, I'm not going to entertain a junk discussion, I'm going to entertain...
This is for both. I appealed for both.
For what?
This, this is an appeal for the, for the storage of stuff there, yes. The use was, that was, that was done after.
Well, the whole issue is, is the use.
Well, I appealed for the stuff on the property.
As far as I'm concerned, you can store whatever you want on it. The issue before us tonight...
No, that's not, I, I appealed the, the stuff on the property.
Is secondary use.
Yeah, but that's not what I appealed on.
We have nothing to do with the junk on the property.
Oh, I, I appealed that.
Yes, sir.
If I may be heard, um, there were, there were, there were two cease and desist letters that had been sent out. One was for junk, one was for use. The junk was unappealed. And, uh, just so that you know, that matter is now before the land court.
You're saying that the junk is unappealed and before us this evening?
That's right, it was not appealed before you this evening. What was appealed is the use of the property for two principal purposes, without the requisite special permit.
And that's why I'm stating that we just want to hear the special use.
No, but that, my appeal was for the stuff on the property. That's what it was for. They both go hand in hand, and I appealed it in a, in a timely manner, and that's what I'm here for.
Jeff?
What he's attempting to do is, he's attempting to bring this up so that he can go to land court and say that I've got an administrative remedy. He, I don't know what he intended to do, but that cease and desist order that was issued by the zoning enforcement officer, which was brought to you, was brought, uh, as an appeal, was for, under 4B, 1C, which is to use his own property.
What do you have there? That's, that's not what I'm bringing forward, it has nothing to do with land court.
The, the order, the order for the one that I didn't read, because my assumption, based on this description, was the special use, was the order for, for the junk issue through Google Earth, which July 30th of 2017. Do you have a copy of the appeal?
I don't have a copy, I have a pop, copy of the cease and desist letter. Are you not, have a copy of the appeal?
The application for hearing filed on August 29th, 2017. Nature of appeal, which I read, was no junk was present, looks good from street and neighbors.
That's what I'm here for.
Nature of relief request, no junk was present when issued notice from ZEO, no fine should be imposed on me. So technically, he's right. His, his appeal is on junk.
Mr. Condoys. But, but, my understanding is the cease and desist order that was given by the ZEO with respect to that junk was given on July 6th?
The cease and desist, this is dated July 30th.
For the use. So if it was in fact for the junk, he missed the 30-day period, and I suggest to you, you don't have jurisdiction to hear that. So, do you have the same copies I have?
No, that's, that's not true, Jeff.
It's a same, it's dated July 30th.
Right, but what I'm saying is, right, but what I'm saying is, there was a cease and desist order for junk.
Which is this?
That was issued, no.
No, the one that you have, which is this right here.
Right, this is under here for the, for the, for the uses, right? There was a cease and desist order that was issued under a different bylaw section on July 6th for the junk, saying get rid of the junk. It says get rid of all the equipment and the, and the like.
So your letter is different than mine?
Oh, yours is.
Yeah, we don't have any July 6th.
No, you don't.
No, we don't.
Because he didn't appeal it.
Okay.
This is the one I'm feeling.
It says right here. Okay? July 30th.
Mm-hmm.
And what's it say there? The property located is property for the purposes of storage of junk and other debris.
That's right.
No, but the cease and desist says the use.
That's not what it says here.
Yes, it does. Look in the next paragraph. This one right here. Okay, the cease and desist is for the use.
This is for the junk.
That's for the junk and the, and the use.
The junk has already moved on to court.
The junk has already moved on to court because there was a, a cease and desist that said stop storing junk, opening your stores.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
So as, as advertised this evening, Mr. Holcraft, we're here to discuss the, the secondary use, not the junk.
Well, it goes hand in hand, and that's what I appealed.
But the town's moved forward from that.
Okay. So anyway, there's, so there was no, there was no business going on, and I bring my, my truck home, like I have since 2000?
My question to you...
And there's no scrap, there's nothing there?
My question to you to, to remedy that, are you a DBA, LLC?
No, I'm not doing any of that there, I'm just bringing my work truck home.
How are you incorporated? Are you doing business as David Holcraft?
Yeah, metal, yeah, metal mounted lawn and tree service, that's how I am.
Where's, do you have a business license?
No, I don't need one. Nope.
Where do you get your mail from for that business?
I have a mail, um, Brookfield P.O. box.
So you have no actual physical business building or office?
Oh, I, I have, I have a warehouse, yes.
None, but warehouse, none, where's your office?
I get my business mail in my P.O. box.
In Brookfield?
In Brookfield.
And when you say warehouse, where's that located?
Uh, in, in Southridge.
And what's the primary purpose of the?
Storage of my stuff. So, so the question you're backing up now is, am I running a business there? No, there's no activities there at all, nothing. I bring my work truck home and that's it? There's no piles of scrap, there's nothing going on there? The only thing I've been doing is, is I've been tidying up the property, which I've already done. Which there really wasn't anything there, the biggest thing was my pontoon boat.
What is that?
Allen Road.
And I get the pictures too. There's nothing that says I can't keep my work truck there or my bobcat there.
This is the junk issue though, isn't it?
This is out, his business. He's running a business out of that address.
No, I'm not running my business out of that address, I bring my truck home and that's it. It's no different than anyone else.
His words.
So how am I running my business out of that address? That's what I want to know.
Yeah.
We got piles of stuff everywhere? No.
Are there any questions while we pass this? These photos?
Yeah, what, what does he have stored at the address?
Uh, he has trucks, equipment, and debris.
How many trucks?
Two are registered.
Two open-ended ones, three with the one that actually runs, got a bobcat, got lawn, lawn equipment, uh, mowers, and a lot of debris.
So let's go back to the trucks. How many trucks does he have?
Three total.
And two are unregistered?
Fill the junk.
And one is not?
Correct.
Great.
Is the one that's not look like it's being used?
It is being used.
Oh, yeah. I leave my truck there.
And, um, okay, so what else is there?
Uh, lawn equipment.
Lawn equipment means like mowers?
Lawn, yeah.
Lawn mowers?
Yeah.
I get lawn mowers.
How, how many?
Uh, at least two.
Okay.
They're on my trailer for my, my properties, I can keep them, they're on a trailer.
He has a business at that address.
No, I do not.
He has a business at that address.
Are the, are the mowers on a trailer?
Yes.
Right, on the same trailer?
Yes, they have.
Yeah, for my, uh, properties.
And what else is there?
There's, um...
A bobcat, that's it.
There's a bobcat, unregistered vehicles.
No, we just talked, we already talked about the two trucks, Nick, don't make a sound.
I'm asking Nick, not you, please.
Okay, just answer, but I'm telling you the truth.
I'm not asking you.
Take a look at the photos.
Yeah.
While, while I'm waiting.
He has workers there on, in the pictures, his workers.
Right.
I mean, I don't think there's a question yet, he's running a business out of that address. It's common knowledge, he has a business there.
His, his employees dropped off there every morning.
Nice pictures. Can read them. Is this one of the, uh, vehicles that doesn't work?
Yeah.
That's the plywood that's trying to hide the trucks full of junk.
Yeah, I saw the plywood. The junk man looks like a business, doesn't it?
It says in the script.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I do, but I'm not running my business out of it, I keep bringing my truck home every night like I have since 2000.
So, is there picture evidence that supports that he has, is running his business out of that address, and there is junk? Is there picture evidence?
There's a lot, well...
There's no activity of any pictures of anything being done at this address, because there's nothing being done here except my storage of my trucks. That's it.
Well, landscape, construction, yeah, contractors.
Picture evidence, yeah, gentle.
His employee has dropped off at that address every morning to go to court.
There's pictures of his employees, Mr. Condoys. There's photos of his employees.
I, I saw.
It's not, it's not a fine line, Mr. Condoys.
No, there's no fine line, Mr. Condoys. I hired Mr. Holcraft to go and hang out in the parking lot. The appliances that he took out of that, that apartment sat in front of 28 Allen, I'm sorry, 26 Allen Road for, for months.
It's not?
Not for sale.
There's no activity going on here.
There is no...
There are appliances with doors on them, there's a junk car in the back that you can see from the lake, these are just, I'm assuming, from the road. The view from the lake is beautiful also. I've seen him drive into the property with his truck full of mattresses on reseparation.
You can see that from the road.
Just in the last three months, in, in less than the two years that he's...
And I ask you, Mr. Condoys, do you think he's running a business out of that address?
Me personally?
Yes, you personally.
Activity.
Then it's not, it's guaranteed.
There's no activity going on here.
Maybe you ought to speak when you're spoken to, please.
Okay.
You have any man is at all?
I'm speaking now.
Well, you're not, your turn to speak.
Okay, well, I'm speaking. May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Not yet, Dave.
Okay.
Now, I'll answer any more questions you have, Condoys. I, whatever you need to ask, I'll answer it.
So, so when I, when I say fine line, it's, it's provable? What's it going to take to prove versus pictures?
I'm having to take time pictures of his employee being dropped off at his place of business every morning for the last 28 weeks.
So when Ken asks for, for patience with Dave, I'd ask the same for you. I personally believe that there is a business being run out of that property. But, but you have to understand that when we move on from this, the fine line...
No fine line.
Is a court of law.
Doesn't matter.
It does matter.
No, let it happen. Mr. Mr. Holcraft, he wants us to go to court. I'm like, we should go to court. If he wants to go to court, we should go to court.
So...
Let the judge handle it.
So straw poll, you think he's running a business out of residence?
Uh, yes, and I think he needs a special permit to do that.
Which he doesn't have.
Which he doesn't have.
Which he's not requesting this evening.
No, he is not, he's, he's arguing against the cease and desist, and I think that he has no argument.
You haven't shown me any activity of, of me running a business out of here, except me bringing my truck in and out. That's it.
Well, through admission of Sue, she's seen property there for four months.
Not just Sue, the whole neighborhood.
Well, this evening, Sue's the only one speaking.
Everyone else is running a business out of it.
You see, I come in with my truck, sometimes it's empty, sometime it's full, but I bring it home at night.
There you go.
But I'm not running my business per se off this property. It's only my truck that you see there.
If you were asking for a straw poll, I would say that you refuse the appeal.
Ken? Second?
So...
Yes, ma'am? Colin here?
So, we have a man who...
Through, through the chair though, okay, thank you.
We have a man who drives around and home, own passive business that says junk removal, and he has junk in his yard that's undisputable. He parks his car at his place, so I think it's, um, a reasonable conclusion to say that, um, that's what he's using it for. He's not bringing it someplace else, the junk is in his yard.
Now, what I'm asking for, just for the zoning Board of Appeals, to deny his, deny his appeal and issue them an order to remove all vehicles, equipment, and debris that's currently on his property.
Us, us just simply denying it would fall back to you and that would, your...
You can put in those conditions also.
So you're requesting conditions of what?
Removal, I, I put it in there, it's in the cease and desist.
Well, just...
Removal of the vehicles, equipment, and debris.
To comply to cease and desist, ZEO's cease and desist order. He can have one unregistered vehicle on his yard.
Right.
Not full of junk. But see, the, the issue isn't junk, but Colin says it's proving that there is a business because he's a junk man. I, I haven't forgotten about you, Jeff, I promise.
He's got equipment there.
He's, he's got equipment, it's...
He's got a lot of equipment, and that comprises a lot of the junk.
A lot of people, when I speak, a lot of people in town have...
No, you weren't asked to speak by the chairman yet.
You weren't. The issue isn't the, the bylaw for storage of vehicles, those are business vehicles, so it kind of goes hand in hand.
Right.
That it's a business.
Yeah.
We have the name...
That's why we're denying the appeal.
Jeff?
I guess my question, take her statement a little further is, yes, he has the truck, he has all the, whatever he picks up, scrap and junk per se will use. It is in the yard, so in fact, it's been picked up somewhere else, brought to that yard, and eventually takes it somewhere else, whether it be to Wilbury, Milbury, for disposal
or scrapyard to cash in the metal. I guess my question is, so if you're, if you're picking it up somewhere, bringing it somewhere to store it until you eventually get enough copper per se to bring to the scrapyard to cash in, that's a business.
So you was in a butter belief there's a business there as well?
I believe without any doubt there's a business there because if you collect what you have, you're not going to show up with a four-foot piece of pipe to collect it. If you collect, if you pick clean out somebody's yard, you're going to wait till you have a substantial amount and then bring it to the scrapyard for, for weight or whatever to collect your...
So Dave, your response to everything that's been said?
Yeah, that, I understand what Jeff just said, but that's not true. I'm not bringing stuff there and piling it up. You have the pictures you show here of my lawn mowers, my snow blowers, and some screens, but it doesn't show any junk, debris, it doesn't show sofas, mattresses, tires, refrigerators. It shows no, none of that stuff. None of that stuff is there. What I bring in?
We're not saying...
Let me speak, please?
No, let him finish.
Let me speak now.
I speak for...
Let me speak now. I'm very polite to you guys.
I apologize.
I'm not bringing my stuff and storing it on this property. I bring my truck home every night. It may be full, may be empty, and then I leave in the morning with it. But do I drop stuff off, reload, put it back on? No, I do not. And each picture show, if you look at those pictures, it just shows snow blowers and my lawn mowers and other stuff, screens to the house. It doesn't show piles of junk anywhere. You haven't shown me a pile of junk. The biggest thing Nick was complaining about is my pontoon boat. Out of everything.
That's, that's a junk issue, Dave. This issue is about...
Well, okay, you're talking about junk. We're talking about bringing junk to my, there's no piles of stuff on my property through those pictures. So I'm not running that site.
So you're, are you denying the butter's statement?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, there's no piles of stuff, any of these pictures.
There never was?
No. I bring, I bring the truck home, but I don't pile up scrap until I get a big pile and then bring it in. I do not do that. There's no piles of sofas, mattresses, tires.
All right, so this...
So you can vote however you want, but there's no activity, there's no business activity being run from that location. I do bring my truck home there.
So my belief that there's no business activity, it's not an issue to comply with the, with the order?
Well, I don't know what I can do. I mean, I'm not working out of that yet. I mean, you don't see the Bobcat running every day. It's just packed there. It's not picking up metal, it's not picking up dirt.
I think it's something you'll have to work out with the ZEO.
All right, I'll, I'll do that with him.
I think with, with the discussion we've had here this evening, the board is unanimous that there is a secondary use of a business. I'm going to entertain a motion to deny the appeal and to comply with the ZEO's cease and desist order immediately. Second? Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. I will make, entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:49.
Some moves.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will open the final hearing at the same time, 7:49. The Brookfield zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:15 Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, in the Brookfield Town Hall banquet room. The purpose of this hearing is to consider an administrative appeal from John E. Holcraft at a property owned by him at 17 West Main Street in Brookfield regarding a cease and desist order with the, I thought we had a sign. Do we have three from you, Dave? Yes. Oh, this is 17, so cease and desist, so... So this is another issue altogether.
That's correct.
Now, now I'm confused. Regarding a cease and desist order from the zoning enforcement officer, the letter that I've read is a cease and desist for another business at 17, correct?
West Main Street.
That was a cease and desist on 17 West Main?
Correct.
But the...
No, that's not the issue though.
But, but the appeal, so have, has he, so first of all, has...
He's, I believe he's appealing a request of a sign.
Correct.
There's no cease and desist on that.
No, it was just a denial, that's all.
Right.
What, what went out for, um, what went out for the telegram and gazette posting for this? Was it for cease and desist on the...
It's regarding a cease and desist order from the ZEO, period.
So Dave, the issue we have before us tonight is that it was advertised as you appealing the cease and desist order.
That's not what I put in there.
It was advertised as a cease and desist.
Well, that's, that's, you guys did the advertisement. This is for the sign.
Yeah, and that's what I'm just catching now.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to rule that we can't even hear this tonight because he wants to talk about a sign. The public here is about a cease and desist. So we're going to have to as a town go out and re-advertise for his initial appeal, which is pretty clear of permitting a sign for freedom of speech in a business district. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've got a letter that was about a sign.
The posting in the paper isn't about a sign. Am I correct, Jeff? Am I correct in how I want to proceed here?
Well, there's definitely an issue with notice. And that would give somebody an opportunity on an appeal.
There's an issue with what, please?
The, I'm sorry, there's an issue with the notice. The notice in the paper said he was appealing a cease and desist order.
And we have a cease and desist order right here.
His application...
But he's not appealing it.
He's appealing the sign.
He's appealing the sign. We don't have any letters saying there's a cease and desist against the sign.
It's in the packet for the cease and desist, but that's not what he's appealing?
Right, we didn't get a cease and desist on it.
It's in the packet?
Yeah. The intent, however, like the last one, is not here, in my belief?
It's not in my packet.
For the cease and desist?
For the cease and desist about the sign.
No, there was, he doesn't have a sign, so there's no cease and desist. The way this was posted in the telegram and gazette, which was, which is by law what we have to do...
Yeah.
Was posted for that third letter in this packet. It was a cease and desist on the business.
Right.
Mr. Holcraft is not appealing that, he's appealing the sign. So it was posted incorrectly. The intent is not the same as the sign, so...
Okay, what I said was there is no paperwork in my packet that says there's anything about a cease and desist or a denial or whatever for a sign.
Correct.
I don't see that.
That's why we can't talk about it tonight.
Sure. Was there one?
Yes.
There was?
Yes.
Okay, well, you don't have it.
You can't cease and, you can't cease and desist something that's not created.
Right.
He's appealing his denial of a permit application.
Right.
If he started and there's a cease and desist, that's an issue.
So did we botch this?
This is botched.
Okay.
So everything's normal?
That's what I wanted to know.
It's still normal.
And the intent is, the intent is not here.
We don't need that kind of comment.
Well, it's a truthful comment.
We don't need that kind of comment.
It's a truthful comment.
Would you ask him to be quiet?
These are all seven, just through us, okay? So the intent isn't here, we can't discuss it, we're going to have to repost it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When was the appeal filed?
When was, it was filed eight 12, eight 17.
You have 100 days.
So if we postpone this for a month, we're good?
Eight 17, nine 17, 10 17, yes.
Well, we need two weeks to post plus another wiggle room of a week.
Seventeen.
So that brings it to a month. Pete?
Did you say 100?
It's a law that says that any applicant for a permit has to be current in all of his fees, taxes, and services. I don't believe that Mr. Holcraft is current.
That onus, that onus is on the building inspector, not this board.
May I speak to that?
You would have the authority.
No, Dave, no, you can't. We're not going to hear it tonight anyway, so it's kind of...
No, I just wonder why you were even entertaining the, entertaining the application if he's not current in, in the payment of his fees owed for services.
That's between the building inspector and the tax collector. There's, there's forms for that, that he has to go before the tax collector, she has to sign off and present it to the building inspector. So the onus is on the building, the onus is on the building inspector. But we can't hear it because it's not posted correctly, so I'm going to entertain a motion to continue.
Mr. Comtoys?
Yes, sir.
The letter that I just gave to Pat was addressed to the telegram gazette and to me as a, as a butter, and it says, uh, appealing a permit for a sign.
Right. What I have in front of me...
Okay.
Is, is, I, but both of these are Brookfield letterhead. The one that I read is the one that I have in front of me, dated the same exact date, the same exact time. I don't know. I don't know, unless we have a copy, anybody have a copy of the posting on the TNG?
What was it posted?
I don't know the...
Twenty-third and the 30th.
So Tim, you have the right packet.
Well...
You got the right packet. There's no appeal to a cease and desist, it's just a denial, a denial.
It's still in town of Brookfield.
Well, it's a mismatch. With that piece of pink that is not rolled with that, that's what I said, it's botched. The hearing is botched.
Are you looking, Jeff?
There we go. No, we can't. He, he didn't appeal one, and the one he did do, we have to redo it. So, there we go. This is Sue's stuff. Probably should go to the, go to the...
Has anybody found it? All right, so I, I still have not been shown proof and I need there on the side of caution, so I'm going to entertain a motion to reschedule, um, this hearing with the proper posting for November 7th at 6:00 PM in the banquet hall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to comment on something.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to comment that...
Yes, sir.
Where'd Peter go?
Well, it's, it's not a comment through the chair, I'm not going to entertain.
Okay, I'll understand, okay.
Okay.
I'll talk to you then. Let me talk to you then. I don't need to talk to you.
Does that have anything to do with this motion?
Has to do with this, this permit, yeah. Permitting process here.
Quickly.
This board is only to give me the okay, yes or no for a sign. Then I go for the permitting process through the permitting office.
Correct.
That is when, wait a minute, let me finish. That is when they can say I owe money or I don't owe money, and then they can say... Just let me finish.
But I made that comment already.
I know, but I want to make it clear. So this board is only to give authorization for or against something. And then, once I get approval, then if I get approval, I go through the permitting office, and then they say, you can't get a permit because you owe real estate taxes or you owe something else. That's the way it's done. So I want to make sure Peter understands that. No, he's not in the room.
My question was about that subject as well, and it's more just a question. What is the mechanism if the building inspector or the tax collector finds that there are outstanding debts or outstanding issues?
A permit is not issued until it's resolved.
Anything.
But what's the mechanism? Do they, no...
It's, it's a sheet. No, it has nothing to do with us.
Right.
The permit was denied by the zoning enforcement officer, so it hadn't even gotten to a permit stage.
Okay.
Could I get my letter back?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Eight oh one. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.